Morning, gentlemen. Good afternoon.
Hi, Steve.
Aye. Y'all ready?
All ready.
How's it going, Mr. Stevens?
That's all right.
Dustin, get ready for Steve.
Brad, I was just asking you about the hybrid in July.
You're ready for it?
That's gonna either be mentioned or it's gonna...
I'll have to see what they've done today.
Right, that's what Kim said, probably. She said, "You're usually really good about that."
It's nerve wracking. Never nerve wracking for me, too.
No, 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 just... Well, she... I'll be the only one there, because they're both off.
Preparation.
I mean, yeah, I want you to, but you do whatever you need to do.
They only have those pictures.
But no, she said, "Just give you a nudge to remind you that..."
It can really fool you. They do a good job. Dusty does a wonderful job. Two gals at Envoy do a wonderful job. Byers does a wonderful job. And they've all been working on it for a couple of months. I mean, it's not easy. You forget. He should be...
County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, June 24th, 2024. Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of Commissioners Altman, Dillinger, and Harebrant present. John Low, would you please lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the approval of Executive Session Memoranda from June 24th.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the meeting minutes for June 5th, 2024, the Joint Board of Commissioners and County Council meeting.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then June 10th, 2024, Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Plaid approval, Ridgeback Woods. Mr. Lucas, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have one plaid on the agenda. It's Ridgeback Woods, located on 196th Street, east of Promise Road in Noblesville Township, and we recommend approval of the plaid.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Highway business. Mr. Thurman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Very short agenda today. We have no permits or bond or loan to credit. The items fall under agreements and supplements. First item is supplement number one with DLZ, Indiana. This is for our small structure, 33062. This supplement, we changed our scope a little bit. This project is out on Strout Town Avenue, just west of Stairway 13 and Endod. We have coordinated with Endod. Endod's planning a proposed roundabout at 13 and Strout Town Avenue, 8th Street, Madison County. But we're lengthening our project a few hundred feet to match up with their project. Now, the supplement's an amount of $14,610.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next item is an agreement with Hanson Professional Services. This again is for another small structure over in Washington Township. It's construction 31048 on Eagle Town Road. Construction right now is slated in possibly late '25, early '26. The engineering variance in the amount of $184,000. Highway records approved it.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The only two items I have, I do have a couple announcements, I'll let you know. We had our public information meeting last week for 146 in Hazelville. It was at Noble Crossing Elementary School.
Which one?
Just north of...
Sorry, I don't understand.
She wants to often talk to you.
Wow.
The meeting went pretty well, we thought. It was very well attended, probably had 70 to 80 people.
Wow.
A lot of people hung around later with comments and questions. I just wanted to let you know, Paul and Kevin Seifert is our consultant, along with CHA's Do the Environmental, and both firms showed up with numerous people, did very well, very happy with how it went. I mean, obviously, they have some unhappy people, but overall, it went very well. We got a lot of suggestions, and a lot of people are gonna come in. Second announcement, if you've been down on site, 146 in Hazelville, we set some more beams last week, so we have all... I think there's nine beams per stand.
Looked like a real...
It starts to look...
Yes.
Get there. So two of the three stands have been set. The next set of beams, the last set of beams, are scheduled for next week, on the first and second. So we're starting to make some progress, and it's starting to look like it.
And when is that supposed to be completed?
The completion of that intersection, I believe, is middle of next year.
Yeah, I mean, technically, it's not till the first of the following, but, you know, intent purposes, it'll be next year, probably late summer.
Okay.
If everything goes well, I think the intent is to try and have the interchange fully operational going into winter.
Going into...
Into winter, this...
Oh, really?
Yeah. If everything works out, the weather and everything, maybe make good progress, but to have... We'll see. Not 100%, but that's the intent.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Brad?
Now, just, technically, we have a Friday meeting scheduled for the day after July 4th, so assuming that people probably don't want to come that day.
I would...
We figured that way. In lieu of that, though, it's gonna be possible to have a short work session after the July 8th meeting.
I'm fine with it.
Well, we have two.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
We already worked it out, really recently.
Okay, all right. That worked out well. If you're lingering things, we're probably gonna...
Yeah, just keep knowing the sign looks wrong.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
No harm.
Okay, moving on. Court administration. Jill Acklin. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We have two things under our heading today. The first one, they're both with an individual named Daniel Vaughn. It's different Daniel Vaughns.
Okay.
So coincidence. The first one is Superior Court for Public Defender Contract. He's... Judge Campbell has had public defenders switch out, so Daniel Vaughn is gonna be taking over as public defender in there.
Again, it's an Indianapolis attorney? I just noted.
I don't know where he prac... I don't know him, and I don't know where he practices. I'm not sure. I think he has a contract with a different court.
Indianapolis.
Oh, is his firm Indianapolis? Okay. Yeah, I'm not familiar with him.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and our next Daniel Vaughn is, we have a contract with Malcon for 4D consulting. It's the same as the arrangement that the auditors and the... I'm sorry, the clerk and the prosecutor's office have with this company to handle the 4D paperwork reimbursements, and so that's the second item.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I know you've got something for probation.
For probation, yes. If you don't... Would you like me to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, so I'm here for Madonna. They are during probation pre-trial supervision week, which is the week of July 15th. They're gonna have a training in service, and they've requested a meal reimbursement for that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. ISSD, Chris Mertens. Two items.
Hello, I was just pulling up. The first one is, what's listed as the first one? The second one, I think I know what.
The first one is statement of work for 2024 security assessment with Triaxon Security.
So that is... EMA has grant funding available for some cybersecurity projects. Every other year or so, we've been able to do a penetration test of our external network. This is an engagement with that company to do that test, along with some social engineering test as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then the other one is a change order for cognizant CVS support. It's just adding some additional hours to that contract. That is our ongoing support for Workday, so it allows our staff, as well as HR and the auditor's office, to open help desk tickets. The volume, obviously, was high at the beginning of the year here with the Go Live. We sort of see that stabilizing now and reducing, and so hopefully, this will get us through the remainder of the year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Safety and Risk. Stephen Rushforth.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Today, I'm here with three liability claims forms. I'm not sure in which order you show those, but the first one that I'll start with is for Walker Professional. This is for a contract fulfillment audit for the year 2123 through 2124. It's to the audit that reflects the difference in auto valuation throughout the year. That is in the amount of $1,169, so I am just requesting your approval to issue payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The second item is for an internal claim administered by our office from an incident that occurred May 6, '24. The short version is, a county employee operating a county vehicle accidentally struck one of the parking ballards pulling into the gas pumps. The damage for that was $3,083.10, and we are just requesting your permission to issue payment.
So moved.
Second, but this vehicle is how old? It's like five years old, and we're spending three grand on it.
Yeah, so we did... So for a vehicle to be totaled, it has to be 70% of the actual cash value of the vehicle. We've ran the numbers, and so from a standpoint of actually having this vehicle totaled, it wouldn't be totaled, so... But that's kind of where it stands from. Then it just becomes discretionary.
Well, it was because then you actually had to put a new radiator on the machine. I know nobody wants to drive... When I look at how long this thing's gonna be in our fleet...
So this vehicle will actually be in the fleet probably 10 years, if not. Our vehicles, those certain vehicles that are low mileage, so it had some radiator damage, it did get repaired, and cosmetic side of it did get repaired as well. But our vehicle's staying for at least 10 years, and we maintain them in that standard, so when it's time for us to get rid of them, they'll still get value out of it.
Okay, so you didn't want to drive a junky-looking vehicle?
Correct, because we did that for years, and the way you've set it, the fleet's not that way.
Okay.
Okay.
So on that one, has that...
Is there a motion?
I thought it was...
It's been...
We already did, okay.
You forgot the question.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Perfect. And the third one is from... For an internal claim from an incident that occurred April 3rd, 2024, impacting a privately-owned vehicle. Individual struck a pothole under county jurisdiction, resulted in two damaged tires and a damaged rim. All the facts were collected, provided county legal. They recommend that this be deemed compensable. The damage amount in the amount of $1,007.27, and we are just requesting your permission.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Buildings and Grounds, Steve Wood. Cummins Plan Equipment Maintenance Proposal.
Thank you very much. What this is, is we're replacing a generator with a new generator. That generator is the one that you donated to Janus Development. It will be at the backup site for the 911 facility. The new generator's been set in place. This just offsets that contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've already done probation with Jill Acklin. Emergency Management Agency, Ryan. I don't see him here.
You're about 30 minutes ahead of schedule, right?
Yeah.
Well, these are the...
I... We can cover it, yeah.
These are the two statements or the two items for EMA. One is developing cybersecurity or resiliency, COOP CAG, and we held it... I asked it to be held last time, because I wasn't sure with the new EMA directive coming in, whether he had eyes on. He has. I've talked with Chris Mertens, or indirectly emailed back and forth.
Yeah.
You're in on this. You're good with the contractor and the scope of work.
Yes, and Steve and I met with Ryan, as well as the new director, talked through it. I also took... Had a copy of the statement of work and had just a quick review done by our incoming Chief Information Security Officer. There was a few questions he had, but in general, I think this is a worthwhile exercise to go through. Something we really do need.
Is this for both? Would...
Yeah, one is the actual COOP CAG, the other's an exercise.
Okay.
I move to approve. Both.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Clerk of Circuit Court, it's an approval of PayGov US Service Agreement. I don't see really anybody here, but I think this is kind of a no-brainer, or something that we do every year.
I think they handle credit cards, probably.
Yeah.
Credit card charge as well.
Yes, that's what the email said.
Okay, then I need to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioner Committee Report, Steve.
We met with our insurance committee to review mid-year progress. It looks extremely good. It doesn't mean anything on the bottom line ultimately, but means that mid-year, we're doing real well, so...
No, that's good news. I was talking to my neighbor, who's a commercial insurance broker, and he said it's just ugly out there in terms of what's getting quoted, what's getting dropped. We were very lucky to be with him.
I am telling you, what first person in our people do on this insurance... If you're not in the insurance business, you probably don't know how phenomenal it is. It is phenomenal.
Christine.
Spent most of my time working on the new 911 center. We're very, very close to having a bot number and a bot agreement. I think that you're kind of legal on their work, and Steve Wood and the gentleman that we have hired has just been phenomenal, Brian.
From Skinder, yeah.
Uh-huh. He is really, really good. And we went through several scovings on the project, because we had more complete plans, and the price of the project went up over $4 million because of that pricing. We went through with EMA, or EMA was participating with 911 staff, and went through the project and made some significant cuts. Some were no brainers, some were savings, some will just defer to bring it down to the $85 million bond. So I'm real comfortable with that. And we've got a near-complete draft with the City of Noblesville. They approved... City Council approved our plans, has submitted on the center. We weren't able to get that agreement in place before that meeting, but we now have a draft that I think is, with a couple tweaks, will be sufficient to document the road and the impact fees.
Great.
Great.
I want to echo your comments about Brian Simmons from Skinder Construction. He's been incredible, trying to wrap his arms around that big project there. It's extremely complicated, as well as what he's been able to do to help us with the courthouse renovation and some other projects that we're working on, so kudos to Steve Wood for bringing him, because he's...
Well, finding him.
Yeah, he's been great as an owner's rep.
He's got a rare combination of...
He does.
Being practical and being knowledgeable.
Mr. President, I also want to throw in, we did hold a personnel meeting. Most of it was around our Sheriff's Department and their request to bring their department up to the level of the State Police.
Oh, yeah.
Which is a rather substantial amount.
Huge. That's happening all over the state, just so you know.
Yeah, I know. It's a big question right now, but you're talking about several millions of dollars.
Right.
So what we asked Councilman Hall and Councilman Griffin to do was to meet individually with the Sheriff's Department and go over it. We already had Abby with our personnel people go over it, but we wanted them to go over what logically the council might do, and that they're gonna bring that recommendation back to Personnel Committee, and we'll make that recommendation to council.
What level are we talking about, the State Police?
That's pretty significant.
Well, I was looking at the Marion County, the Indianapolis there, it's 77th loss, just straight salary, so...
Oh, it's a huge...
It's unbelievable.
Huge.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're meeting with them on July 1st to talk about that, and we also have two different options from WIS that would be in between where we are now and the initial request that we presented at Personnel. So we are looking at that, and we were meeting with them. The sheriff and I will be meeting with them on July 1st.
Because part of that request included longevity, and you'll recall, when we went to our pay scale thing several years ago, we did away with the longevity. You know, in our pay scale, it was already built in, so where we used to give longevity. So we are looking at what would happen to this if we took the longevity pay out of it with WIS. They're doing that calculation as well.
Okay, great.
We spent a lot of time on this.
Well, it's a ordinance.
Yeah, great. Okay. Mr. Attorney.
Yes, I have a few items. The first is ordinance 062424A. This ordinance amends ordinance number 050905A. This is for illicit discharge related to our MS4 system, and also the National... There are the NPDES, the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System, permits that the county has. The only amendment here, it raises the penalty to the statutory maximum amount of $2,500 per violation. Each day that the violation's not resolved, it's another violation. Prior to this, it was... I can't remember what it was, I apologize, but it was not that amount, so we've raised it to that. So that's the only amendment. So I would ask that you guys adopt it... Suspend the rules, adopt it on first hearing, and then the penalty will take place within, once appropriate notices have been published.
I move to suspend the rules to adopt said ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I would move to pass the amendment as stated in the...
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next item I have is ordinance number 062424B. This is an ordinance that prohibits alcohol on county-owned property. There is a caveat for certain events, such whether it's at Cox Hall or 4H or something like that, if there's been an appropriate approval from the county. So it's in line with our current COI policy. This one also does have a penalty as well, so I would ask that the... You would suspend the rules and adopt this one on first reading, and then the penalty will take effect 30 days after the appropriate notice has been published.
I'm not seeing that, except for your report. I've seen it in your...
Yes, ma'am. I believe Commissioner Dillinger was the... You might have been the one that requested this, is that correct?
Which one?
The ordinance for prohibits alcohol on county property.
It was me.
It's... So right now, there's an exception in there that talks about if there's events that have been approved by the county, so that won't prohibit, you know, 4H from having 4H from having alcohol there, because I know you guys just recently amended that policy. And then when it comes by is Cox Hall, there's weddings there, I think that that was still permitted.
Yeah, all the concerts.
Concerts and stuff. So I know right now, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, and Steve Wood too, but you know, there's like the Courthouse Square, people have events, they just send an email asking for approval. I think this outlines a more official process that, for them to follow, and it identifies what county property is and is not. So if we, if you don't feel comfortable today, we can have it adopted the next one, too.
I want to review that, non-intended consequences. I think this is in reaction to the door proposal by Noblesville.
It is.
I know it is. And I just, we have competing ideas on that, and I think we're creating a problem that doesn't exist.
Well, you've had this ordinance for over a week.
No, I got it.
I got it. Unfortunately, just on Saturday, I didn't get back until Friday, I apologize.
I didn't even know it was requested, so.
Okay.
We will, we can work with you, Commissioner Altman afterwards on this to get a time so you can review it.
Yeah, we're, we're creating a problem that doesn't exist.
Well, from a moral standpoint, I disagree.
I disagree too.
That's fine, but you're here to govern that morality.
I, well, I totally, I totally get that, but I'm out there and I'm advocating, and I watch people that are going down to the prosecutor's office, they're getting prosecuted for alcoholism, they're going down and they're getting to the probation, and here I am advocating for people trying not to be addicted to alcoholism as an elected official. And, you know, to see this and to try to encourage it, please let me speak. You know, I, that's just my moral belief. If I, I, I sound like a hypocrite if I'm encouraging this to happen, is how I look at it.
Okay, I look at it as there's no encouragement. I think we don't want to put that burden on our Sheriff's Department. We gotta look at what's going to take to police this thing. I, I just think we're creating a, a problem that doesn't exist.
Well, I can tell you when I went to wedding rehearsal three weeks ago, and I walked, two or three weeks ago, and I walked through to go to the restaurant, there was someone with an open beer bottle drinking out there, and there was plenty of police officers around, plenty of them.
I'll say, Commissioner, right now, so this, I think it codifies what the practice is right now. I mean, if someone were to have a, again, I apologize, going back to Cox Hall, I just wanted to freshen my head, I guess, but they still, a venue, or event, if they want to have an event that has alcohol, they still have to ask for permission from the county parks. If an event wants to be hosted on our county's square, they still have to email Lee Buckingham and Steve Wood to get approval from them. So all it does, it's not, it's not a blanket prohibition, it's, it's, they have to ask for permission to, to have alcohol on our property for those events. So I guess like the casual bystander that would just be drinking on the town, or the county square, that would obviously be prohibited, but there's probably other legal issues with that, until the doors pass at least, if someone were to do that, but.
And I did see in the paper today where Carmel was considering, and Carmel was considering it.
Well, they're all considering it.
And I think that's fine, but.
Yeah.
You know, having grown up here and having my kids and grandkids and great-grandkids here coming up for Christmas parades and homecoming parades and allowing people to walk around with drinks, I'm adamantly opposed to this. And I did go down to the state beverage board and ask them to stop it, which they did, and so everything's kind of pending on this.
We have a difference of opinion.
Well, do it in Carmel. I don't care what you do in Carmel. Leave Noblesville out of it.
Anything else?
So I did, just, do you want to, do we leave this today, or do we want it today?
I think in all due respect, you know, she had requested.
Yes, I still got to make sure.
Commissioner Altman to review it.
Yep.
I want to make sure that we give her opportunity to review it.
Well, you can try, you can't pass it today anyway, voting mills.
Yeah, because they have to submit rules.
I was trying to convince you not to have that racist hit.
The next ordinance is 062424C.
Wait a minute, do, do we need to introduce that then today?
It can be introduced.
It can be introduced, but in case Commissioner Altman have comments or suggestions.
If we don't introduce it today, we can't pass it the next meeting unless we have a unanimous decision, right? I make a motion to introduce the ordinance today.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
And one abstention.
That makes sense. I apologize. Ordinance 062424C. This is, the, the county health department has been working with the state health, the health board to work through the septic and sewage systems ordinance. Unfortunately, I don't know why it is, but the, how the code's written, we have to approve it, then they make comments, and then they want you to approve those comments, and then for some reason they keep coming back. Jason, Amy's team have worked diligently with the state on this, and this is, I think, the third time, is that correct, Jason?
No, third time for us.
Yes, yeah, that they've, they, they don't.
Geez, would you get it right?
Well, and, and actually, after we did all the work that we had done, thinking we had it right, they basically moved the goalpost on us just after we passed it in October and changed it again in December. So Amy Baumann from my staff, huge kudos, has been working very hard with the state to get the language right and just update as well. There's only nine counties in the state now that have even got past ordinances through it. Luckily, there were like seven in the last month, so we think we're there. We've been through it about three times with the State Department House, so we think we've got the clean version that's ready to go now with the right language. I'm trying to be encouraging because I do not want to be back here again.
I move to, or is it an ordinance?
Yeah, so that'd be.
I move to suspend the rules to adopt the Health Department requested ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then I would move to adopt the Health Department requested changes to its ordinance.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The, the next item is a contract that NDOT is, has requested that the county use. Now, NDOT is requiring all local municipalities to have our own contract for projects, is that correct, Brad?
Right now, it's for the Community Crossings.
Community Crossings.
Program. They're now requiring us to have a separate construction contract with the contractor in addition to the Form 96 that we traditionally have used as a contract form. So we've rushed to try to get a contract template put together so we can meet their requirements.
Yep, and this, we had chancellor review in Allen County, or is it, Vanderbilt County, this is their form as well. It's pretty similar to what their contract is that they use at their level, but, so we see you guys approved the form today, and so Brad can get it to the vendor for, so they can start using this.
I assume we incorporate a reference to specs and the bid results and all that stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is the interlocal agreement between Hamilton County and Westfield. This is for the end-of-the-year GO bond that the county issued for five million dollars for 191st Street. We were realizing after, I think it was discussing with Westfield and the auditor's office, that we did not have an interlocal yet, so we could not give them the five million dollars. So this just memorializes that. It's their project, their responsibility to get our approval for different things if they're, with the roads in our jurisdiction, but it just says that this is five million dollars going to you guys, similar to, I think, close to the Pleasant Street Bridge where we said, Noblesville, hey, this is, this is our maximum contribution, don't come back to us for more, and that, that's that. So if you guys are agreeable to that today, we'll send that to the county council at the, their next meeting to get them to execute that fully.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The, I apologize, I have three more items, they'll be real quick. The Hamilton County Express Public Transit Agreement. This, this agreement was previously approved by this board, but it had in there Janus, and it needs to be Hamilton County Express as the responsible party. There was a deadline, so the auditor's office worked with Commissioner Harebrand to get it signed and, and placed prior to the deadline, the audit, the audit contract between the county and KSM, and so we just need you guys to ratify, Commissioner Harebrand's signature today.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so, I think, yeah, I think that's all we need for that one. Then, the last two items are a, one's a contract for Hollowell Consulting for Public Relationships, Marketing Communication Services.
Reapproval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The final document is for, is for Bose Public Affairs for strategies for concerning PR communications as well. Does that make any difference?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that is all I have. I apologize for the, late the items.
All right, thank you. Director of Administration.
Yes, thank you. For several items for your debate. First off, I'm presenting for your review, approval, and the signature of Commissioner Harebrand. In this, RF distribution form related to the June 11, 2024 invoice, invoice number 44888D, in the amount of $132,074.17 for Westler Engineering for design and acquisition construction administration and construction managing services related to Phase 2A and 2B of the US 31 Bakers Corner, Hamilton County Region of the Utility District project.
Who, who?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, presenting for your review, discussion, and appointment. Chris Dice, Director of Hamilton County Parks Department, has submitted a request for Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to appoint a liaison for the Recreational Impact Committee. The request is that one of, one of you commissioners be appointed to serve as a liaison for the Hamilton County Parks and Recreation Department Impact Committee, which he says will be a fairly light ask. He doesn't think there will be too many meetings.
Commissioner assigned to the parks?
I don't think we do.
Yeah, I don't either. I always thought you always kind of did.
Is that what you always thought?
That's what I was thinking.
You know, bad decisions were there, we know who was untrue.
No, you weren't, Chris, you really.
I don't mind doing it.
I don't hear you. It's just, personally, I'm a little overwhelmed.
That's fine. I, I have capacity to do it, so either one of us should be fine.
Doesn't matter to me, if you want to do it.
It's not a bruise there, but I'm happy to do it.
I'm a little frustrated.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I'll tell Mr. Dice, too.
Can you let him write there?
So that Commissioner Altman will be appointed to that committee?
Yeah.
Item number three, presenting for your informa, information, I just want to let you, make you aware that Indiana American Water recently sent a notice to the Hamilton County Region of Utility District regarding the schedule of rates and tariffs that are in effect following their rate case that went before the Utility Regulatory Commission earlier this year. I shared that, and Chris Janock shared that in, and he advised me to get that to Oscar a few years, so forwarded that to Oscar last week also, but I wanted to make sure that you all got a copy of that. Next item, presenting for your review, discussion, possible signature, Commissioner Harebrand as president of the Board of Commissioners, a request from Mike Thibodeau, president and CEO of Best Handing the County, seeking letters of support from the Board of Commissioners in their capacity as an employer, and also a separate letter in their capacity as a community partner. I have two proposed letters if.
In support of what?
They are in support of their.
Just a couple grant requests, is that right?
Grant requests, yeah, thank you. Or grant requests for, who, Mike is seeking.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five, presenting for your review, discussion, appointment of a voting delegate for the NACO Annual Conference. Received a notification or request from Kent Ward.
I'm going.
Just indicating that the county did not yet appointed a primary voting delegate or proxy for the NACO Annual Business.
I'm going, Mr. Harebrand.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Yep.
You're going anyway, so.
I'm going anyway, so, yep.
Where is it?
Um, somewhere.
Probably New Orleans in the middle of summer.
No, it's somewhere, it's, it's in, I think Miami Dade or something like that.
In the middle of summer.
In the middle of summer, something, something like that.
They're usually cheap on those conferences.
Yeah, it was in, it was in Texas, Austin, Texas, last year.
That might be true.
It was real hot.
Next item I have is presenting for your consideration and approval, a request to adjust the lead time for new hire Chad Connect to be adjusted to coincide with an employee with five years' experience. This would be based on Mr. Connect's extensive experience in municipal government and prior municipal employment experience within Hamilton County.
I move to approve. He and I talked, he had a longstanding vacation planned that he wants to take.
Second.
Discussion.
I told him he was exempt, so go ahead and do what you want, but he thought it should be cool.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I do have two other brief matters that came in post agenda. First one is email that I forwarded to you from Kate Baker. Basically wanted to give you a heads up and make sure that there were no concerns with required approval for her to have, for the Noblesville Main Street to host their first Friday events, and you approved a litany of those earlier this year. They're doing something special in July, and.
Here, Paul.
Mr. Wood, Mr. Wood wanted her to advise you, make sure that there were no issues. They're going to have putt, mini golf set up on various locations, and they also wanted to extend their request to utilize somewhere in the back area so that they could draw people back to the fire in the memorial so that more people could see the fire in this memorial.
Steve, is there any potential damage with, I assume they're going to put down carpeting or something for the putt-putt?
Yeah, I, I, I thought, I think we're covering on everything, just ask anyway, too many windows or anything like that, so we shouldn't have any issue.
And the email that I CC'd for un, indicated they should try and put the, at least the initial putt away from the building so people aren't going to send balls flying.
Is it driving range?
Right.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And lastly, this morning, I received an email from Mike Thibodeau, president, CEO of Best Handing the County. He's requesting signatures on a couple of documents. The Department of Labor is requesting some performance charts signed by the grantor on closed projects. He provided funding that might have been involved with match funding, but in any event, provided funding on two programs. One was the mental health project closed April 30th of 2024, and also the Pursuit Institute project, which closed on December 31st of 2023. He attached a couple of drafted performance charts that he would like to be signed and